It is six o'clock, so I'd like to call our meeting to order. And first up, we ask for any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Anybody have any? I think Eric, you had a request to move Mr. Piccolo up to the line during the agenda. Prioritize. Where did you want to move that to?
If you'd like, we do it right after the approval and then before hearings.
Okay. Okay, with me, without objections. Anybody else?
Just kidding, I'm not objecting.
Okay, we entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Some more.
Eric's suggestion.
Support. Any last chance for any comments or questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no. And motion is carried. Roll call. Has been taken.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Pledge of allegiance. If you will please rise and join us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the January 24, 2023 regular session meeting minutes. Your pleasure.
Some more.
Support.
And a motion to support. Any comments, questions, changes, deletion, additions, deletions, anything? Hearing none. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no. The motion is carried. Let's see. Where was? Next up would be, I consider a resolution for appreciation for Mr. Nick Piccolo. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt. Support.
And motion to support. Mr. Piccolo. Care to join us, front and center here?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no mark on the stage.
Yeah, there should be a star there for you. You shouldn't back the mark.
First time by motion, I was, let's get him out of here quickly. We didn't get him up front.
No, 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 that was not you telling us. Okay, so we have a resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Nicholas Piccolo. Whereas Nick has faithfully served the city of Elma as a city commissioner since April 6, 2010, and whereas Nick has played a key role in the economic and community development of Elma throughout his tenure on the commission, and through such projects as the purchase and cleanup of land on the riverfront and Huffman Road, a total of 26 neighborhood street projects, approval of a planned unit development for the former middle school property, the City Park restroom reconstruction, re-appelitation project, development in the downtown area, including the Wright-Lupine Opera House, creation of multiple development districts that have paved the way for construction of new upper story apartments, a hotel, the rehabilitation of parking lots four and eight, which include the first two electric vehicle charging stations in the downtown, and supporting the investment of the ARPA funds into downtown. And whereas Nick has supported intergovernmental relations with the first and follow-up countywide master planning document, and providing dollars for an initial feasibility study of a passenger rail line between Ann Arbor and Traverse City with a stop station here in Elma, and whereas Nick has supported successful passage of municipal village issues involving the renewal and expansion of the Neighborhood Street Improvement Initiative in years 2011, 2016, and 2022, and multiple grants that strengthen the Elma Public Safety, Public Works Library, Information Technology, and Transportation Departments. And whereas Nick has carried out his fiduciary responsibilities during COVID, one of the most trying times for our city, state, and nation, serving the community virtually to maintain transparency and the essential services to the citizens of the city. Whereas Nick has supported the many community events, including but not limited to the Elma Highland Festival and Games, Lucky McDuck, US 2027 Car Tour, Back to the Bricks Tour, Elma College, Elma High School homecoming events, Elma Art Walk, the Elma All Class Reunion, Come Home to Elma for the Holidays, the newly created Elma Alive, and the MSU Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, which brought over 75 communities to Elma for a day and a half of learning. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Elma City Commission, city staff, and citizens of the Elma community express their heartfelt gratitude for the contributions of Nicholas Piccolo throughout his tenure as an elected official for the city of Elma, and further extended their wishes for his continued success as he once again becomes a private citizen following the expiration of his term, which was December 31, 2022. Be it further proclaimed that this resolution be presented to Commissioner Piccolo at the February 14, 2023 city commission meeting, and that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the city of Elma on this stage. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I will keep them to be very thoughtful. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the city and work with great folks on the commission, wonderful employees of the city and the citizens. I was thinking about this, and I thought there was one piece of advice I got when I was a student and looking at a career in higher ed, and the guy I was working with looked at me and said, listen, there's one thing you need to know. You won't be judged more by how well you listen than what you do. And this has been a group that has listened well, and listened to contrary opinions, and treated those, whether they agreed or disagreed, with dignity and respect. And I think it bodes well, and thank you so much.
It certainly has been a pleasure serving Nick. You were missed already, and continue to be missed.
It was a joy, bro. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we have that. We'd like to take a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? It's passed. Thanks again, Nick.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Moving down to hearings. We need to set a public hearing for Tuesday, February 28, 2023, excuse me, at six o'clock or soon thereafter, as the agenda will allow, to consider the establishment and declaration of a plant rehabilitation district and industrial development district for Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing Incorporated. Your pleasure to set the hearing.
Some more.
Any motions for it? Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? We have set a hearing. Thank you. Next, we need to set a public hearing for February 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the agenda allows, to consider three requests for PA 198 industrial facility tax exemption certificates for Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing. Your pleasure.
Some more.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? We have set two hearings. Moving to the consent agenda. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for payment to Fishbeck Engineers in the amount of 3,500 for conceptual design services for security upgrades to entrances at the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant, also to authorize the execution of the related professional services agreements. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Motion support? Comments, questions? You want to give some background?
Yep, sure thing. Yep, sure thing. This would be split between the city and with GAWA. There's really not the water plants, but GAWA will take care of that half of it, so it'll be 1,750 coming from the city for the wastewater treatment plant. The changes are really being driven by the security of those buildings and for the egress for our employees, because currently I don't think we've had an opportunity to visit over there, but there is no panic. Yeah, there's no panic bars, so if the building's being locked, you have to manually unlock it to leave. So those are issues that we'd like to take care of in this. Moving forward, this will give us some ideas on how to best, one, deal with it from a security standpoint, and then of course just start the design work for the doors and things like that that need to happen.
Questions, comments? And this will give us the bid documents. Is that what we're going to want to put out of this?
This is the first part of it. We'll have what the bid, this will be the very first part of it, and then we'll come back and do some bid design, correct Dave, after that?
Yes. Dave Regal, Public Services Director. What this is, is going to give us a few options for each building, and then whichever one we decide to go with, it might be a hybrid, because there are a few different options. What they're going to do is give us some sketches and layouts of what they would propose, kind of what we want to go with, and what we're specializing in. Then, once we select that, then they will start the design phase, and that will be a separate contract. This is to explore what different ideas is what we're looking at right now.
Okay. I guess the question, how extensive of altercations or alterations do you expect for these two buildings?
Could be.
It sounds like it's rather substantial.
There could be, depending on the options they give us. You can do something with some different options with the blazing, which is the glass, or replacing the storefronts, the glass, and putting in something more solid and different types of doors. And those would be the options they're going to present to us, and they'll give us costs for each, so that's what this is for. So depending on the selections, it could be, as you mentioned, it could be very invasive, or they could be more minor ones, depending on which direction we want to go on as budgets will advance.
Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, and I think we have the motion on the table, correct? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed would be no? Motion is carried. Thank you, Dave. Eric? Moving down to the E, request for purchase. We need to consider a resolution to approve the request for purchase from Frederickson Supply in the amount of $143,662 for the purchase of a new yard waste collection packer truck. Your pleasure.
Well.
Okay, we have a motion to support. I need some more background for the camera. We talked about this a little bit amongst ourselves.
Yep, yeah, we talked about this at our last meeting. Our current truck is an old garbage truck, rear-loading garbage truck. It was a used piece of equipment that we found, I believe it was Wisconsin, we found this particular truck and brought that in. The main purpose is we wanted to, it was basically a pilot, and we got the truck. We were hoping that, and it did, cut down on our comp and worker-related injuries. Instead of having to throw stuff up onto a flatbed truck, it's lower, so you can just dump it in there. That worked out very well for us. This truck has serviced it 12, 15 years, 12 years, 12 years that we're at with this truck. And we're at the point now, like we discussed in the last meeting, even if we did engine repair, cylinder repair and all that, the frame of the truck is still a 2009 garbage truck that's coming apart. We looked at some different options and even tried to find another truck to replace this one. The one, we did find one, but it was way out of California. So what we just, we looked at, we're looking at and proposing is a new Dodge two cab pickup, two-ton pickup. It has an open frame that this packer accessory will be attached to, and that will allow us obviously the same kind of operation that we did with our current truck, so you don't throw up onto a flatbed there, pack it down. This one will be a little bit smaller than our current one, but probably an average cycle in a neighborhood will be one to two dumps to get all the yard waste material in that particular neighborhood. And yeah, it's a price of 143,000. We initially had budgeted for right around 97,000 for a replacement, but everything has gone up substantially. The truck itself is coming off the Michigan my deal price, and to get everything ready and ready for yard waste pickup on April 1st, we do need to get our request in to get the project rolling. So that's where we're at with that.
What's the delivery date for it?
I, I'm hoping it's before April 1. That's about all I can say right now, correct me again.
Based on, there was one that was in stock when we brought it up to the commission the last time, but it actually sold the day we talked about it, sold in the afternoon. So this is one that they have on order, so we've kind of asked them if they would hold it until we could get an official approval. The timeline is very tight for the April 1st, so if not, we might have to use the old one for a couple weeks, but.
It'll get us through though, it's not.
Yeah, it's not, we're not looking at the end of the year or middle of the year, they've told us. Based on the scheduling, it was six to eight weeks that, excuse me, 12 weeks for that one. It gets us very close to the April timeline, so I would anticipate maybe a month of the old one, and then we can get that one out of the loop.
Is there an option to sell the old one?
There's no option. If it's usable, but we'll have to mention everything that's wrong, whatever, yeah, we option off.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor would be yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Recommendation on bids. We need to consider a resolution to receive and award bids for the annual chemical procurement for the wastewater treatment plant, also to approve the related request for purchase. The following bids were received on January 28, 2022. Bids for chlorine, ferric chloride, and sodium hypochlorate from Havland, Dona Grand Rapids, Alexander in Indiana, Temra in Kansas, and PBS in Detroit. And I guess somebody had Riverview?
JCI.
JCI. Am I missing it? Oh, okay. Mine didn't say JCI, but hey, so JCI and Riverview. And if I'm reading this correctly, the recommendation is to purchase ferric chloride from PBS Technologies for $29,094. And is that the only one we're buying right now? I was a little confused on the graphs.
That was the low bid for ferric chloride. The, it just cut it off, it cut off your JCI Jones Chemical was the low bid.
Oh, okay.
They cut it off.
So there is recommendation for a bid for JCI Jones Chemicals for the, both the chlorine and sodium hypochlorate. Okay. That makes more sense to me.
Yes, that's, yes, they have some reason that cuts it off.
Did everybody else get a chance to see this?
I have not.
Each one of those that are recommended is a low bid, so.
I thought that was the big one that we talked, it's not on there.
That's for GAWA, the lease law.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Thank you, that's where I was confused. Thank you.
Move to approve the recommended.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Is it standard that you can't get a bid on one company for both of them?
Certain companies only specialize in certain companies, is that what I thought?
And we've used PBS before, correct?
Correct.
And JCI is the same company that's being used by GAWA.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the bids say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? The motion is carried, and the bids are approved. Next up, consideration of a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget amendments as presented.
Well, I thought some were.
Do we have a motion?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to support, and I assume you're going to do the presentation now, Curtis?
Yes, yes, I'm just going to go over them real quickly, because I think you've already talked about pretty much all of them in some form or fashion. So the first one on there, number, or letter A, is the park restroom. This will officially clear this out. We have the revenue budgeted last year, because we were anticipating closing out before the end of fiscal year last year for the match portion that we're getting through the DNR grant, and also what we're going to be pulling out of the Herb Booth endowment. So those are 173,000 and 175,000 respectively, so we'll have to move those into revenue for the current year. And then the 38,000 is the remainder of the expenditure that we have to pay in this year that was not closed out as of 6:30 last year. So, once we have these done, we will officially be closed out with our restroom project from the financial side of things. B, C, and D all relate to each other. I think we talked about it when we did the budget review last time about how Public Works in general was completely within budget, in fact, actually a little bit under budget this year, but some of the individual categories, just based on where the usage was and where some of the time went, some were higher, some were lower. So these amendments are to move the downtown maintenance, the recreation and culture parks, the Riverside Cemetery are all currently projected to be over budget, so we need to add more expenditures into those areas and to offset those. The Buildings and Grounds is under budget, is projected to be under budget, so is the non-ACT 51 Public Works, as well as Major Streets. So there is a $35,000 difference for the General Fund, because Major Streets, just the net difference, Major Streets is going to be lower than anticipated, and General Fund expenditures are going to be a little bit higher than anticipated. But citywide overall, it's a net zero, so it just depends on which departments and which funds they come out of. And I think we talked about it the last one we were going over, the biggest reason, I mean, some of it's just usage every year, it's hard to predict when we're setting the budgets in April, some of it's just because we're doing a little bit more in this area versus that area, but the biggest thing, the areas that we're under are the areas that we typically use a lot more seasonal work for, and the areas that we were coming in under, ones that we use a lot of full-time for, it's because we had to pull some full-time people off of those projects and into those other areas, because we didn't have as many seasonals towards the end of the year last year. So I do have a note there at the bottom, too. After all the budget amendments we've done so far this year, because I think this is the fifth one that we've approved so far, or assuming that it gets approved, it'll be the fifth one that we got approved this year, for the General Fund, the new total expenditure number is about 5.7 million, and that will still put us $3,418 to the good projected for the year. So that budget that started off balanced with all the movement that we've done, we're still looking at coming in basically within $3,400 and on the good side right now.
It's pretty tight.
Not a lot of wiggle room, but we're there.
Who has questions for your presence on us? Anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor of those amendments, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you, Curtis. Number three, consideration of a resolution proclaiming the month of March 2023 as Women's History Month. Your pleasure.
Smart guy.
Any background on that?
It's something we do on a yearly basis, and you don't have to read this one if you don't want to.
You don't want to read this?
So we do this on a yearly basis, and it's probably the third or fourth year we've done it at least.
Request from Nancy Michael, who is part of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Yes.
Okay. I assume that's the same impetus that we've had in the past for this? Okay, yes. Perfect. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to agreements. We need to consider a resolution to approve the lease agreement between Centra Healthcare and City Elma for the rental space at 221 North State, for a term commencing in March 1, 2023 through February 28, 2026.
What approval?
Support. Motion support? Comments, questions, background?
Yep, we discussed this at our last meeting. Centria has gone through two lease agreements with us, including a modification during the COVID year, year and a half there, and they were all up to date on payments and things like that, so they've been good tenants. The agreement they had in front of you is for a three-year lease. It does increase the rental amount from what they're currently paying $3 a square foot, and that'll take it up to $4 a square foot. That'll be a $771 rent payment per month on the 2,314 square feet that they're utilizing. They were required to pay all the taxes, utilities on the space, so pretty straightforward is what they've done in the past, other than increasing the rental rate.
Okay. Did we get a motion on that? We did. Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Moving down to the reports of officers, boards, and committees. The commissioners may receive the following reports by any, when resolution or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Tonight we have a Elma Police Department, January 2023 report, a Elma Transit, January 2023 report, a Finance, January 2023 report, a Fire Board, January 23, 2023 report, or draft minutes, excuse me, a Solid Waste Authority from February 6, 2023 draft minutes, Planning Commission from February 6, 2023 draft minutes, Airport Authority from February 8, 2023 draft minutes, and the City Managers' Report. Your pleasure to receive these.
Move to receive one through seven.
Okay, so you're going to pull eight?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Greg, can we get an update on seven?
We can pull that one as well.
We can, we can do that underneath my news sign, as long as you have it.
And then I would like to pull item number two as well, if we could. So if that's agreeable to you, your motion?
Sure.
And the support was agreeable? Okay. So we're going to pull two and eight. For all those in favor receiving the other six, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Motion is passed, and we approve the six. Motion to receive two and eight. Reports number two and eight.
Some more.
Motion support? Okay. My question on two is a transit report, and just, I'm interested if we can get, you know, there's a lot of data there, but to me, it's, you know, we get this all the time, and it's, I don't have anything to compare it to. I'd like to really see some of that information in, you know, this year, this year, this month versus last year, this month, and then year-to-date this year versus year-to-date last year, so it kind of brings some context into all those numbers that you're providing. It would just help, really help me get to understand whether, you know, start to see some trends, things going good, things going bad, what's going up, what's going down. It's kind of hard to make, have the sense of anything, and you're only looking at one month at a time, and it just, without context, it just, I struggle with trying to figure what I'm supposed to understand there.
So would you like a quarterly report and then have it for yearly report?
If it's, I know you, I think you generally provided it monthly, I don't know if it's easier, if it's.
I mean, data-wise.
What's that?
Data-wise, as far as you want a big chunk so you can compare from.
Well, like I said, if I, you know, if I could look at the numbers, like you gave us, I think it's February numbers this time, right? So it's February this year versus February last year, and then as you go along, it's year-to-date this year versus year-to-date last year. So if you look at those kind of two things together, it gives some context to how things are going, rather than just saying, okay, here's a number of 2,000 riders, or whatever it was. Is that good, bad? Is it up, down? I just don't.
Sure.
So I just want something, if something like that would help, it would help me certainly. If anybody else has any comments?
I agree.
Okay. So, and I don't know specifically what all I want, but we'll come up with more questions.
I will give you more, and then if there's something that you don't want, then just tell me what you don't want.
Sure.
Because I don't want to waste your time either, I know it's a hefty packet, everyone.
Right. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. No more questions on that, or anyone? No, see, Minutes' Report. Eric, we get.
Sure, since we'll, we'll pick you back right off of the transportation, you don't have to, you know. At our goal-setting session meeting, we talked about the millage for the transportation in the coming year. We talked about reducing the millage from the .9604 mills to .8 mills, and we just wanted to discuss that with the commission tonight to get a better feel if that's something you'd like to pursue. We do have other partners with Ethica, St. Louis, and Pine River Township that we need to let them know, so they can start to put their budgets together. Pine River, theirs, so their budget sessions a little bit sooner than ours, they're April, April, May, as opposed to June, July, so it would be good to be able to give them that information. We'd also discussed, and we're working on some numbers and things now, to bring back to the full commission, with the pay scales for the part-time and full-time drivers to look at in the new budget season of possibly moving those folks from the grade ones for those part-time drivers to the grade two, and then the full-time, we have three full-time drivers that are still in the grade two, move those to the grade three. Currently, they're the only full-time employees that are at least on the grade three, so we'd like to evaluate that, but we'll work on those numbers to bring back to you. drivers that are still in the grade 2, move those to the grade 3. Currently, they're the only full-time employees that aren't leased on the grade 3. So we'd like to evaluate that, but we'll work on those numbers to bring back to you. So from that perspective, from the millage, what does everyone think about the .8? Just open it up to the group.
I guess, I don't have any objection to it. I mean, it sounds like you've looked at it and it looks like that will work.
It's a yearly thing. I mean, we can, something make them look at each year. Is it something that's, once you vote on it, it's stuck for six years or something like that? It's a, we can evaluate every year, but from the numbers that we've looked at, we can handle even those changes in personnel until those grades, once we get through the information that that was doable with those numbers too.
Good.
Okay. Any more questions?
Okay. And then one last thing I'd like to run by you to see if you're okay with. We have a, our server at the transportation building is, is, it's gone, it's not working anymore. We were fortunate enough to get ours up and running here, our new one here at City Hall, and currently we're working off the, our City Hall server here. I've received one quote so far for a server that's very close to what we have here, the idea being that we have some redundancy in our ability to back up each other. We have one over there, it's very similar to the one here, so in case something happened, that forbid it happen here, that we could do what we're doing right now with transportation and migrate everything over there for the time being until we get something worked out there. What I'd like from the commission is, would it be okay, because right now we just have the one, the one quote and the one idea of what to put in there. Once I receive that second one, to work with that on which would be the best option and then bring that back to you for ratification at our next meeting. The reason why is our need times for equipment, the two vendors that we talked to, Dell's at least a month out and then the other vendor would be six, maybe eight weeks out. But I don't have any solid numbers in front of you to, that's at least giving you more than one number. And right now, the price that they gave us from Dell was 16,000, 16,000 and change for the server. The good thing is here that we do have the funding that comes in from the state and the federal government to help pay for things out of transportation. And this is an opportunity for us also to add that redundancy that we've never had before and some of that being supplemented by the state federal money that's coming in, so.
You quickly realize how important technology services are when you don't have, I mean, that was a crazy day. I don't know how they did it by memory, but it was, yes.
It was one day, it was one day. Back to the old way of how it was done, with the slips of paper and.
But you realize how difficult those things have become in their day-to-day business operation when we don't have it.
I'd just like to take a quick second because, because you're right. My drivers picked up all those people that morning by memory. We had nothing. You had no idea what times, anything. And so I'd like to give kudos to my drivers because they did an amazing job and I also have my heartfelt condolences to my dispatch team because they're the ones that were answering the phone from the angry people later in the day that weren't the normal pickups because we had no idea who scheduled a ride or what time we were to need to pick them up. So there's a lot of angry people that were calling and saying, you know, where's my bus? When, they had no idea that we had to be there. So, and for the camera, the public, you know, we're doing all that we can to get this correctly. And obviously, that's not how we like to do business because obviously, the use of transportation services in our area is on the increase. And the last thing we want to do is, you know, put a bad taste in somebody's mouth about public transit, oh, they won't show up and it's not how we like to do business. So that's all. Appreciate it.
Sounds like some lessons learned, lessons learned will be in order after we get this cycle cleaned up, so.
Well, it's, it was a, it's not quite, it's almost five years old and they're supposed to last five years. And this one, our server that we had here in City Hall, was seven years old. So it just, here we are. So if the commission's okay with that, we'll come up with a plan so we can get something ordered and bring it back to you for ratification if that, if that's okay with everyone.
Seems quite necessary.
Right, yes.
All right, all right. I just wanted to verify that so we can, because the purchase will be over the City Managers' $10,000 limit to, to do something with it, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, those provisions for emergencies, what you said, I don't know if that really qualifies as a true emergency.
Well, a true emergency is kind of, it's that period, because, yeah, because we were able to migrate it, it just took longer than, it never had to happen before, so it took longer to have that happen. It took almost a day to migrate everything to get it up and running. And then we had some other things that kind of came up, which supposedly isn't this related, but it's coincidental at least, so. But anyway, thank you, we'll get going on that panel, so. Vacant properties, last meeting we discussed a home over on Grashit Avenue. I have spoken with the attorney and then also with a code enforcement official. Underneath the, it definitely doesn't fit with underneath our dangerous building ordinance. There's pieces of the house that, that we can deal with and we are dealing with from the blight thing, blight side of things. The code enforcement official has been in touch with the owner to take care of those things that could be taken care of underneath the blight and also to investigate, you know, what cats or whatever may be in there and remove them and if there's a, an access point that needs to be taken care of. As I was talking about it with the attorney, once they took care of those items, our blight ordinance kind of stops at that point. It really doesn't get us any further. And one option or one idea that the attorney kicked out to us is a vacant properties registration ordinance. And a lot of the issues that we do typically end up having in town is because a building has sat vacant for a period of time. And until they hit those blight and then dangerous building issues, it makes it, it's real tough to try to say, hey, I'm going to fit this building into a blight or a dangerous building scenario. With that in mind, we do have a couple of ordinances that have been provided that we're reviewing and to get you a better idea of what would take from a staff standpoint. Knowing the workload that the code enforcement official has right now, if this is something we wanted to head down half of, this would add some structures that we haven't been dealing with before, because they didn't fit necessarily under blight or under dangerous building. So moving forward, we would have to kind of reallocate priorities, some priorities on what we're doing from a code enforcement side of things to implement something like this. Like I said, the positive of it is you could focus in on those houses that are vacant because there are some houses that, that we, we could probably say are blighted that are actually folks who lived there. So this could give us an avenue to deal with some things that someone's not living in that we could deal with, but it will take time and energy to do that and we'd have to evaluate how much time that the code enforcement official would need, how much time I would need from the attorney's office to, to pursue things. As long as people are being cooperative, it doesn't cost a lot of money from that side of things, but if they're not going to be cooperative, then you need the attorney's time, side of things. But for a circumstance kind of like what we had over Grashit, once we get those, those small, really, they're small items comparable, taking care of from the blight side of things and the cat, we really run out of things that we can do. And this would be the, the next, you know, option you could go after, but it would be a whole another ordinance added to the, to the city's file ordinances, so. But, so anyway, that's, if there's anything else you want to add from that, from our discussions?
Sure, thank you. I'm the City Manager, Adam Florrie, City Attorney. And Eric did say it correctly, he and I discussed these matters at length and reviewed them thoroughly. There are sort of different tools that we have depending upon the particular circumstances of any given case. So there is a dangerous building proceeding and that's under the housing law of Michigan. For, for that tool, we're generally looking at circumstances where a property or a structure is structurally unsafe. You know, it's literally, the structure itself is unsafe and it doesn't always mean demolition. There are ways that a property can be remediated short of demolition, but it often means demolition. And so this could be a problem with the foundation, a problem with, with walls or just, you know, problems with the structure itself. So that, that's one tool, so to speak. Another option, as the City Manager noted, is sort of individualized police power ordinances that deal with individualized aspects of the property, such as the blight ordinance, which deals with certain unsightly conditions. Occasionally, there's, you know, ordinances regarding noxious weeds and grass and things like that. But, and so those are more of a piecemeal approach to fix some of the problems with it. And then as the City Manager noted, there's another ordinance that we've not currently adopted here, but we could consider, and that's a vacant building ordinance. I did provide Eric with a sample or two from other communities with which I've worked and I have drafted several of these and worked with other communities. And it's just like it sounds, it, the point of it is to incentivize property owners to make productive use of the property, to not let it sit vacant year after year after year. And so there's, there's lots of aspects to it, but as a general matter, it essentially sets up a regulatory framework where you have to register vacant property and, and again, there's aspects of the ordinance that would incentivize you to make productive use of it other than just to let it sit vacant. So I have seen that work successfully in other communities and that's sort of attacking the problem from the front end, right? So we're, we're stopping properties that are vacant from, from getting to the point where they're dilapidated and potentially dangerous. So I think that's a, that's a good mechanism to use as well. So, and as a general matter, I think it's prudent to approach these on just a case-by-case basis because while they may, may seem similar, some properties that are literally dangerous, while others are just unsightly in terms of how they appear and, and so on and so forth. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I would just say that I'd be happy to work on any of these projects that the commission would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to give, you know, the commission an update, discussed last week. And like I said, code enforcement official is working with the owner right now to deal with a couple of the blight things that we can deal with right now. Was their response, just curious? Were they pretty supportive? Were they, they understand, was it? In their own? It's, it's, a lot of the things when you deal with these, you go out and see responses that things have come up, dollars, this sort of thing. They were polite and, and willing to, you know, spoke with the code enforcement official and made some arrangements. So that's typically, it's the follow-through, you know, that's what we'll see if.
Now, I know sometime back, a number of years ago, and we were dealing with some of this before, one of the issues that came up was Michigan, I think back in the day, a dozen years ago or whatever it was, a couple, a decade or two decades ago, Michigan didn't have a regulation that where the, if somebody was to be in their home, they went into a nursing home, went on Medicaid, if they did, if they sold their house, that money would go towards their care. But if they didn't sell their house, it could, the house would remain and go to their estate after they passed away. And Michigan did not, was one of the few states at the time, I believe, did that claw that money back to reimburse the state for the Medicare or Medicaid that they had paid for the care of that person. I believe that has now changed and that was one reason that I know, I was given that some of these houses were sitting vacant, was people were hanging on to them in order to leave that in their estate rather than just giving them money over to pay for their care. So they let the state pay the bill and then the relatives would still get the benefit of selling the house after they passed away. Is that, do you, do you know if that's the case still in Michigan or is that, is that my understanding right there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe your understanding is correct. In order, in order to qualify for Medicaid, there is a certain spend-on procedure that you'd have to engage in. It does allow you to exempt certain assets and so, but yes, your, your understanding of the process is correct and has changed.
Yes. And I just, part of me wonders if people still think there's the possibility that they're going to have this estate after, I mean, I don't know what, what houses may be being held onto for that reason, but if we can help get the knowledge out there, if somebody is hanging on to a house thinking it's going to be a bonus to them, you know, in their estate, it really isn't the case anymore. If we can educate them, get them to sell the house and.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I may, I, I think that's a good point and, and again, your understanding is correct and I, I do probate work as well and I, I see claims coming from the state of Michigan and it does not take long at an assisted living facility to rack up a large claim. And so, and the state is rather, is, is very fastidious with regard to those claims. They look for the money. So it's, it's, I think it is important to perhaps educate some of these folks that they're not, they're not protecting themselves in the way that they may think they are by holding on to some of these properties. And again, I think that's part of the virtue of the, of the vacant property, vacant structure ordinances, is to provide some kind of incentive for them to make it worth their while to make a productive use of the property as opposed to just letting it sit empty. So, but I think education regarding the Medicaid planning aspect would be useful.
So there may be a tool that our code enforcement officer could use to help educate the folks if, if it runs into a situation that's like that. Just educating people might help to motivate them of that. Any other, any comments or questions? So the next steps then, are you coming back with recommendations from what you had with this?
We'll bring you back some, we'll bring back what it kind of could look like with the staffing that we have, the time we have, what it would cost to say if we had a situation where it would require some, some legal help, what that dollar might look like, just, just to give you the fuller.
And additional staff.
Yeah. Well, right now, like I said, I can't really afford the additional staff, so it would have to come from some time of, say, other rental inspections or other code enforcement, say, instead of having to go and knock on the door and say, hey, I need you to move your trash can back in, you know, people should be doing that anyway, that Mike can take his time and put it toward other things like, like this, so.
Are we going to find other ways to re, resources to maybe take care of all these things and there's, I'm sure there's.
Yeah, and, and there's some, a lot of, you know, paperwork when it comes to the normal program. There's a lot of paperwork that goes back and forth to make it happen. So there's some things maybe we can do to help allocate some of that, but, but yeah, we'll come back with some ideas.
But it's still a finite amount. You don't have to work your time in it for anymore.
Yes, there's no doubt about that, but I think these are very important issues and I don't want to totally drop the, you know, all the more mundane things, maybe for what sounds like an easier thing, but we still have a lot of cars sitting in people's front yards and all those other issues that are going on that I don't want to start ignoring them.
And that's, that's, yeah, and that's just it.
Trade-off here.
The other trade-off.
So there may be some resources here to. And the other question I had, you talked about the summer staffing, are we planning to hire more, trying to hire more summer staff, seasonal help this summer for some of these projects that?
Yeah, last year we just didn't get the applicants, that's what the bottom line was there. We were going out sooner.
Are we opening up sooner this time?
Yeah, we're opening up sooner. We're, we've looked at some dollar amounts. We are starting to see the job market tighten a little bit, so hopefully we'll see some, some additional applications coming in.
There's several areas in our town that are looking for employees, so we're not the only.
And then this is just seasonal, so, you know, basically from the April time period.
Are there opportunities for like high school, college students as well? Or are they just, you're looking for just strictly full grown, 21 adults or?
If, as long as they're, you know, basically adults, you know. High school, that might be a little tougher, I think, but, because we have them, you know, using mowers and, and.
The biggest thing is the timeline, it's April, when they're in school, you know, April through June, once they, you know, if they graduate, your school's out, there's options, but that, the school schedule makes it tough. But at this point, if there's anybody with options, we'll entertain anything.
So you have Payton Fire Edgar and some things like the, I mean, it was Payton picnic tables, I don't know what all needs to be done, those little jobs that high school kids used to do when you were younger, but anyway.
Is there a restorative step program with the part-time, maybe having the option for full-time eventually or maybe having the, you know, first-to-apply type thing with the.
Tradition.
Internal hires versus, are they, are they, are they applied for those positions?
We don't guarantee those, but yes, there's always the option if they're a good seasonal employee and we have hired seasonals as full-time employees, traditionally the past in those positions. In fact, the most, the most recent one was four years ago, there was a three-year current seasonal, but we hired it as a, as a full-time employee, so. So if those opportunities come up, traditionally we'll look there. But it's not necessarily given because it depends on the skill set that we get at that time. But yeah, that's always an option.
I think Danny means that maybe it would help or advertise that it could potentially be something that could lead to full-time. Could help we can get, get more people.
That's not something I want to advertise right off the top. But during the interviews, that is one thing we talk about, that if there's openings, but I definitely don't want to create falsehoods just because attrition rates typically aren't that high. Perfect work, I could always use two more of them, especially in the public works. But we talked to them about that, the interviews. If it's something that they decide they like, or if it's a, a job they want to pursue, it's definitely a good way to get your foot in the door for not only us, for different municipalities, local officials, that type of thing.
Just want to talk a little bit about airport. We do have a scheduled joint work session with the Graciate County Commission. That will be a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, at six P. M. at the R E S D. Currently, I'm working on trying to find someone to kind of help mediate or moderate to facilitate the, the session. Also, I'm working with Chris Osterhoff on some questions for the, for the commissions. So I'm trying to hopefully get those done before the end of the week so we can send those off to everybody, so everyone kind of has a, a standard thing. We're working from, the airport commission met, I'm sorry. Airport Authority met on Wednesday of this last week. We discussed our, this particular issue of the operations going forward. And really, we're still with the sticking point of the ownership of the property. The county still insists that, that the city turn the property ownership over to them if they want to run the airport. We got kicked out a few different options to ease the fact that if they were worried about the liability standpoint of if the airport did say go out of business at some point, that in the agreements, we could make sure that stated that the, the city of Alman is willing to work with them on the sales of the property that would pay off any liabilities. And then anything left over, come back to the, the respect to municipalities, both the county and city. I know it was kicked out, maybe we can discuss these on Tuesday, on Wednesday. But it was also, well, the county has some, some ideas about how to get the municipal contribution down to twenty thousand a year. Is there a, an option to move forward with the current setup, the way we have it, that we work together and get it down to that twenty thousand and work that way? So, but that's kind of where we're coming from on our side, I believe. And that's what we stated at the meeting. Chairman Smith, he's our new airport authority member from the county. And he stated, reiterated the stance from the county and that they're still, that's where they're at. But, but everyone's agreed to meet here coming up next Wednesday. And I hope we can bridge some of those gaps, I hope. So anything else, I don't, I don't remember if that was at the meeting with us. Anything we'd like to mention?
I'm in the same position that I've had very long. I, I don't see any reason that Alma should have to sign over property that our taxpayers bought and paid for all those years ago. It just doesn't make any sense to me that, seems like being wholly unreasonable. And we've worked together as partners for all these years. I don't understand, there's nothing they can point to that they can say they can do. If they own the property, it couldn't be done, that they don't own the property quite often. I mean, and everybody got, thank you for all that information you sent out to everybody. I think everybody's had a chance to review it now. I think the, you know, there's some big questions in my mind. The fuel farm that you've arranged for coming to fruition this summer, right? Sales on schedule? Potentially has some, it looks like some good revenue numbers coming with it. So I, I don't know just how all that's going to play out, but that may solve a great deal of the budget issues that are out there. I don't know if it'll solve the whole thing or not. But, you know, it looks like some other airports are making sixty, seventy, eighty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars off of fuel sales. I don't know if that kind of potential exists at our airport or not. But certainly there would be something more than the four thousand we've been generating over the last few years. And I, and I'm just, you know, I, I think we've done a decent job at least of operating the airport in the way it's been charged to kind of maintain it as low a cost as possible. As far as if you look at the comparative airports from the report that the county commission, you know, purchased or they hired, that consultant come in and gave that, do the analysis of their surrounding airports and how we compared. We're certainly running it at a lower deficit, at much lower cost. Seems pretty efficient. It's not, obviously the services probably aren't quite as high, but all the services come with costs. I just don't see how you're going to hire a manager at eighty-five thousand dollars a year and hire a mechanic and do all these things. And I, I question where the revenue is going to come from to handle all the increased expenses that they're thinking about. I, I don't know what magic formula they've gotten. I, I haven't been able to understand quite where they're coming from on all that. So hopefully we clear up some of those issues.
Is it a public meeting or just between?
Oh, yes.
So anybody in the public can come.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. That's why I put it in the, on the newsletter and such, make certain making it public. And, and I hope it's, not just for this particular subject too, that it's a, it's a way that we can all get to know each other some moving forward. Because there's a lot of projects, obviously, that what they do affects us and, and things that we do too affect, affect the county and their revenue also. So hopefully it's a, it's a worthwhile session and, and. But anyway, I will let everyone know, like I said, I'm working on trying to get someone to help us facilitate and, and get those questions. So that both sides are working on those. Is there anything else that you need to, just curious. Okay, thank you. And just some, just wanted to put some, some good news because it's been a long time coming. But Iowa Street is out for bid and we'll be opening bids for that project on February twentieth. And if anything fits in, we'll have that on the agenda for our next meeting on the twenty-eighth. And our downtown parking lots, lot three and two, will open those bids on March first. And again, hopefully we'll be able to have those for you on, on March fourteenth for approval of those bids too. So I'm happy to see those. That's all I have.
Hey, anybody have any more questions or comments for our community's report? Or the other report we talked about, which transit? So motion is on the table to receive those two reports. No further discussion being brought, being, being brought forward. All those in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed, no. We've received the final two reports. Next up would be appropriations. If they're interested in paying the bills today.
Who would pay the appropriations?
If they have a motion, it's supported. If there are comments or questions on the bills, if they have anything to talk about? If you're none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Commissioner comments? Lori, would you like to lead us on tonight?
I have no questions. I love the weather too.
Michelle?
I'm sending my thoughts and prayers to the state of Michigan State. Your family.
Same, my, my thoughts are definitely Michigan State today. And have your news. I, I finally did get out and attend the trivia night at the library this last Friday. Really appreciated providing that to the community. I think it was a fun event for the people that came out. So it was, it was nice.
Roxanne? Danny?
Just thanks to Eric for the goal-setting session the other day. I felt it was pretty informative and I really enjoyed being there, so thank you, Eric.
Sarah? Is that very normal? Adam?
Nothing. Nothing further for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Eric?
I'm good.
Okay. And not much more from me. Just happy Valentine's Day to everybody, you know, every, the best to our friends on Michigan State and everything they're dealing with. And every school, building and system in the world that is, if they're not contending with this, they're worried as well, get on about it. You know, something happening, it's proven again and again, it can happen anywhere. And I don't know, I just wish we had some solutions. But with that, we'll open up the public comment. If anybody from the public would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, give us your name and address. And you have up to five minutes to share your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Steve Brown, Thirteenth and Walnut. We all met a few weeks ago when we talked about the, uh, blighted property at seven oh two Graciate. And I would like to, after reading and listening to Eric's report, I'd like to respond to a few points and give the city commission some things to consider here. So I guess the first point, just responding to Eric's report, it mentions that the concerns about property, property are really more about being vacant. And I would have to say that I don't believe that to be true. The concerns about property are the condition that says, and the cats are running all over and the issues that they create. If that house is vacant, well-maintained, it didn't have vermin in it, we wouldn't be talking about it. So the fact that the house is the way it is is the issue, not the fact that it's vacant. If someone maintains the house, keeps it vacant, keeps it nice, pays their taxes, who cares? It's up to them, right? It's their house. So the issue is not really the vacancy. The issue is the condition of the house and what else it brings with it. And I'm also a little surprised that it wasn't seen that the lighting condition was more serious than it is. When I read the city ordinances and I look at what we have at seven oh two Graciate, I don't know how you could come to this conclusion, but there really isn't a, a real violation of the city ordinances, three of them. And I went through them last time. I don't know that it's necessarily the vermin detail that are in your last minutes. But it, it talks about, particularly about physical deterioration that is clearly there. Maybe it's not falling down yet, but it's physically deteriorating. It's been that way for fifteen, twenty years or getting worse every year. And it also talks about the place being habitable. And if it's had vacant for that long and it's got feral cats living in it for God knows how long, I'm going to say with a pretty high degree of certainty, it's not habitable anymore. And maybe it never will be, I don't know, given especially the cats and the damage that they could do to the inside of the building. So just a little surprised we're not taking it a little more seriously in terms of the condition of the building and the impact it has on the neighborhood, which we just described last time. It's an eyesore. The presence of the cats is, I think, a danger. I think someone else may want to speak to that a bit more. And it affects our property values and the neighborhood. So, you know, I'm not talking about the cities as a whole. I know there's a whole, you've got many properties to deal with. I'm not going to boil the ocean, I want to talk about this one. But I, I have to think that it's clearly a violation of at least three city or, city ordinances. And there are remedies. And I know some are quite involved, probably expensive, going to cert court, et cetera. But, you know, I don't understand why a civil, issuing a civil infraction notice and proceeding with the finding that goes along with that, why that would be a problem? Why we wouldn't do that? Why not? It's a low-effort issue. I don't even know, very low effort. And it's going to get the owner's attention. Eric mentioned they've been in contact with the owner. How seriously, how seriously she took it, I don't know. Well, I've got money issues and I've got this. Well, it's been like that for twenty years. So she's had money issues for twenty years. They're not going to get you better, we all know that. So I would urge the city to say, okay, we're clearly in violation of these, or these ordinances. Issue a civil infraction violation. There's a process to subscribe that covers that. So let's do it. Why, why wouldn't we? I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't. I would like to make one other comment about the vacant property saying is, we've got ordinances here that are not enforcing more ordinances that are going to require staffing. And why do we want to do that? And again, the issue's not the vacant buildings, it's buildings that aren't being taken care of that are deteriorating. So I guess just in summary, you know, we had, it seemed to me we had the tools in front of us to do what we need to do. Maybe just make it definitely think it'd be a proactive thing for the future. But unless we use the tools we have, we'll get it either. So the city should consider this and hopefully proceed in that manner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I'm Joanne Brown. I own with my husband, Steve Brown, the property at three oh eight Walnut, which I, Mr. Mayor, you're very familiar with, I understand. So along with the, the other things that Steve mentioned a few minutes ago, I just want to touch upon an idea that I haven't heard you say in regards to the deterioration of this property and the feral cats that run crazily in and out of that house. For your information, cats reproduce two to three times a year and they can become fertile as early as five months of age. So the reproduction of these cats that will continue to live and attend into, in and out of this house is growing and will continue to grow unless they're stopped. So being that our neighborhood is a neighborhood of young families, families that walk up and down the streets, they have young children. Next door to us, which is directly across from this property that we're discussing, there are three children that live there. Right next door to the house we're speaking about is a family with a young three-year-old child. That's just right in two houses' proximity on Walnut. I'm not even going to address all the young families that live up and down Graciate. These families and these children are outside and those cats can be dangerous. They can spread diseases, lots of diseases. And it's just, it's a safety issue in my mind. And I wonder if you've considered public safety remedies, possibly animal control to gather these cats out. I don't, not going to suggest what to do with them because there are humane and inhumane ways to deal with that. That's not my, my concern. But removing them so that this problem doesn't continue to grow. So I just wanted to suggest that as something, because I haven't heard that yet, as an option. And it really is a public safety issue as well as everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my news to you today. I live at three one six Walnut. Next door to Joanne, Steve and Kitty calling, and our house is causing problems. We bought our house fifty-six years ago. Fifty-six years. We have paid our taxes. We have helped our property nicely. Fifty-six years. Yet someone who doesn't live here and who barely pays their taxes has caused our neighborhood all this trouble. What's fair? What is fair? Remember fifty-six years?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Alex Ablaki. I live in three oh eight Walnut, the property directly next to the property that we're talking about. I don't have much more that I think I can really say besides what had Steve, Joanne and Judy have, have said. I have not lived in our property for fifty-six years. We've lived there for three, for three years. I have a young son. The, the, the cat problem is, it's a major, it's a major problem. My son has started naming all of these cats that end up on our front, on our, on our front porch now. And he's, 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 you know, he's, he's three years old and he's, he's already kind of, he's more names than he can even count, you know? And it's always, it's a new one every single day. We're shooting cats off of our, off of our porch, chasing them out of our backyard. We're shooting cats off of our, off of our porch, chasing them out of our backyard. I just, just the other day, I was eating, eating dinner and, or eating, eating breakfast and out our dining room window, we can see right from the window right now into the, into the thing, I saw three cats in, in the window, sitting in the window. I snapped a shot and sent, sent it to Steve, but two had ran, had already gone, so there's one in there. It is, it is a major issue with the, with the cats and with just the, this, the state of the property. And also, my, my, my son, we had a little playset kind of in our front, in our front yard, right next to the area on our property, directly next to, next to the property in question. And we had to move it because every time the limbs were falling from the tree and you know, it's just like things constantly landing in our yard from, from, you know, just not tending any of the, any of the trees or anything around. It's just constantly a hazard, constantly a problem. I'm worried about my son even wandering over there, doing anything like that. We've made it very clear that he's not allowed to even go on that part of, you know, cross that area or go next to it. There's poisonous plants that are growing, deadly nightshade, a variation of deadly nightshade that's growing from their side and through the fence into our side. We, we take care of it. We've informed him to, you know, stay away from that, or dog to stay, hopefully stay away from it, who needs everything? So, I mean, it is just, it's constantly a problem. Not only is it an eyesore, it's just, it's something that I'm constantly worried about with my son. Like Joanne had mentioned, there's the, the three kids that live right door, right next door, all the kids out there, they're all, they're always running around that area and I'm just waiting for the time that something, something happens just because of the state of this property. So I'm not sure about ordinances. I don't know all of that sort of, that sort of topic. I'm not 100% be sure with all of that, but I do know that it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else carry those commissions? Hearing none. I think, I kind of think we heard some new information tonight. I mean, we turned a little bit about cats before, kind of, was that the impression we were agreeing about one cat? If I recollect properly, a few years back, we did actually demolish a house due to the animals coming in and out of it, causing problems. I believe that was based on health concerns. I don't remember all the details of the situation, but it sounds like we may have a similar situation here. I don't know what the steps were to demolish that house, what it took to go through that process, but certainly if you've got similar health concerns with animals coming in and out of it, if we can identify the openings, I think was one of the things that enabled that to occur, if we can identify where these health things are, if they're not being taken care of. I think that drove a lot of that particular process.
Yeah, we had raccoons and everything.
There was raccoons and, yeah, and all kinds of animals, whether it's cats or raccoons or whatever they are, they're nuisance animals and it does create a health concern. So from a health concern perspective, I think we have different tools than we do strictly from blight or, you know, property owners have a lot of rights. As a property owner, the city can't really tell me what to do with that property and, you know, we're very limited on what we can do. But I think when it comes to these health concerns, we have more, a lot more tools at our disposal. So if we're not looking at that, you know, maybe we could take a look at things from that direction.
I will, I will speak to.
Okay.
In the meantime, is there anything we can do as far as animal control?
The animal control in the county, I'm not sure they even respond to cats. We've dealt with feral cats in the past and they're really nice. Animal control has very little interest in.
Really?
I think that's kind of been the response we've had in the past, but something's changed. The county hasn't been really involved.
Really? So there's nothing anybody can do with wild cats?
They can call Thurlow County Animal Control.
Is that what they do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's their department that they would deal with the situation.
And I can't speak, yeah, I can't speak for them. So I don't know what they would do.
So that's what they are, animal control, so that's who they could call.
The deadly nightshade, I, that was, I think, new information as well. I don't know if we have anything that we can do with.
With Actus weeds?
Actus weeds is one we, we have a lot of authority over.
Yeah, because that seems particularly concerning, too.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I don't, as unsettling as all of these things are, I mean, I don't know what our ability, I know we've discussed before that we can't just enter the property. I mean, how do we determine and take?
Well, I think that's where health concerns can give you the right to enter the property and maybe condemn it or declare it.
It takes, it takes quite, it takes quite a bit of time. The one that referred to was in, oh, gosh, it's been 2012 or so. It was a long process to go through that. And like I said, the code enforcement official has an open dialogue right now. It'd be nice if they would be able to discuss something, to actually go inside. We would need, if, if we had, if you had solid evidence, I mean, you could request through the attorney work with and try to get an inspection warrant, but you have to show cause to do that. That's.
Is this person out of the state?
No, they live, they live in state Michigan.
Okay. But we, I mean, but we are limited to, there has to be Michigan licenses before we can just, and I know we were saying we can't step onto the property and take pictures. We're limited to what we can see from the.
Perhaps where neighbors could supply some of that information for us, the, the reporting and things that they're seeing that we can't sit there and monitor the property. Perhaps the neighbors could supply some testimony or some affidavits that might serve that purpose?
If I may, yes, I would agree with that. I just, in regard to limitations, we are limited in that regard simply because we are a government entity, of course. And as we all know, generally, a government entity is not permitted to enter a private home without certain circumstances being satisfied, whether you have a warrant or whether you have permission from the property owner. So there, there are provisions that would allow us to enter the property, but generally those come either if it's some type of an emergency where, you know, literally life is, is at risk, or if it's in, if the court action's been filed, and in which case there are provisions to inspect property that are the subject of court actions or judicial action. So but yes, our, our ability to just simply, you know, tell our, our code enforcer to go ahead and enter the property, just to seal up holes or something like that, that's, that's quite limited. And we really can't do that without, again, take, taking it to another level of some type of court or judicial action.
And when you say enter the property, you mean not just enter the dwelling, but enter onto the property?
So as a general matter, we, we have the same rights to enter onto the, like, the land as anyone else does. So, you know, if you think about it, if you wanted to, you could walk up on the porch and knock on the door. That's a reasonable action that anyone can do. So we could do that. But, but beyond that, beyond, beyond what an average reasonable person would feel comfortable doing, that's where we're getting into, it would be, likely be viewed as essentially a search or, or the functional equivalent of a search.
So to go ahead and, for example, if someone's, our officer couldn't go in, enter a property, dig in through the brush and to look for an open window?
So.
Or how would that play out?
Right. So, so it depends on case by case basis. For example, if there was a certain kind of emergency, that's more possible, but if we're instead, emergency aside, there are certain limited provisions in certain contexts, like for example, under Michigan's building codes, that gives building officers certain rights to enter onto properties to ensure that any construction or any, or buildings complying with building codes, things like that. But just in terms of, of code enforcement, generally, you're limited to what you can see from the street. You know, you're limited to, or, or again, what, what any, any average person could see. So if, as we, as I said, the, the example that's sort of used in, in a litigation context is that it's permissible for an average person to walk up on anyone's porch and knock on the door. That's what we're all familiar with. And so our code enforcer could do the same thing. But it's not customary or normal for us to go onto someone else's property and start looking through their vegetation or looking at their windows. So generally, we're not permitted to do that. Again, it changes, however, once some type of action is initiated, then we have, as part of that action, we can ascertain the full scope of violations. So that's a, that's a very general sense of it. So I know it's, it's frustrating and when you're thinking of enforcement, it's nice to have more power, but it's, the, the rules restricting the government's ability to enter onto private property are, are pretty strict. So again, that's not, that does not mean we have no options. We certainly have options that we can use to address this problem. But it, it does mean that there's a, there's a check on our options that would stop us from basically just, you know, going out there tonight and fixing the problem as we see fit.
Okay. If you're, if I ask another question, is that permitted?
You can make a statement if you'd like to.
I'll ask a question because I had to answer. I'm just, I mentioned the idea of issuing civil infractions. We haven't really talked, I talked about it, but that wasn't talked about in return. I'm just curious why that isn't being considered as an option.
And I don't know, if staff can look at that and come back to us with some.
I mean, it's, it's in the ordinances. It's, again, I think a low cost, low effort, gets their attention, maybe something will happen, right? So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Last chance. Anybody else want to address the commission? Any other commissioners, final comments? With that, we're entertaining Washington adjourned this evening. Washington support, last chance. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, you adjourn. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you.